Six forty-two, twenty-seven seconds.
You ready? Good evening. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I'd like to get started here. I'm going to call the May 2nd, 2022 Davie County Commissioners' Meeting to Order. I'll ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Father, tonight we come before you, as always, in awe of your mercy, your grace, and your goodness. Father, in your sovereignty, you've placed us in this freest of all lands. You have burdened men and women and called men and women to serve in our armed forces that we might be free. You've called men and women to serve in our fire and law enforcement, EMS, that our streets and our homes might be safe. You've called men and women to teach our kids, and Lord, you have blessed us in ways that we cannot describe by placing us here in this great county. And, Lord, the greatest of all places to raise a family, and we give you praise, glory, and honor for it. Father, we've just come off Easter. We thank you, Father, that there was an empty tomb. We thank you, Father, that we have true freedom and liberty that comes from that empty tomb. And, Lord, this week, we celebrate mothers, the backbone of this great country. And so, Lord, help us, whether our moms are living or not, to celebrate family, to celebrate mother, to celebrate our kids, and, Father, just to, even in this holiday, to just give you thanks, glory, and honor that you truly deserve. Father, I pray for our leadership tonight. I pray for those that speak, that come to present. Lord, give us wisdom, discernment, knowledge, and understanding to carry on the mission that you've given us, to lead this great county and to work side by side to do what you've called us to do. In Christ's name, amen.
I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we'll move to Ethics and Conflicts Disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168, 86, and the Davie County Code of Ordinance of Ethics that was adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest respecting the matter on the proposed agenda, which might come before the board tonight for a vote. If so, please speak up at this time, let the board know before the agenda is adopted. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll look to adopt the agenda. Going to make one change. We're going to pull Item J, the proclamation, out and put it in business. Is everyone okay with that? All right. Just want to make that change. Item J will go to new business. Other than that, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt our agenda with that change, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion of a second. Motion's second. All in favor? Five votes. All right, next we'll move to public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Chair, there has been two people signed up for public comment tonight. The first one is Bonnie Grisby. Bonnie, if you would come up, I'll be timing you, and I believe you're going to speak on the solar ordinance.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Bonnie Grisby. I want to first off, thank you for serving our great county, especially during really trying times. Just one question to consider as you study. If there are much larger counties bordering Davie, such as Roan, who have adopted a 50-acre maximum in order to preserve their counties, why wouldn't we? I want to thank you for making it a priority to learn about this complex topic for yourself by the presentation tonight, individual research, and by studying detailed emails, such as the one I sent you a month ago. My main point tonight is to thank you in advance for supporting our planning department and the planning board that you appointed. As you well know, they spent an intense eight months from February through December of last year. They committed to hundreds of hours researching individually and collectively, meeting numerous times, listening to citizens, and even forming a focused subcommittee to present you with a thorough and detailed solar ordinance. The culmination of this effort was a revised solar ordinance that passed unanimously in December of 2021. Your support of this ordinance confirms your trust and respect for completing the hard task you asked of them. Thank you again.
The other individual signed up is Craig Myers. He wants to discuss the topic of Ag Community Center Building. Mr. Myers, if you'll come forward and state your name, and I'll be timing you also.
My name is Craig Myers. Here in the county, I have a beef cattle farm and row crops and poultry. And I have gotten with Henry Walker and Sam Howard, Rick Carricker, and Holly Miller here in the county. We've got a little committee started, and we would like to kind of let y'all know of the need. And I know Henry's been here in the past talking about this, but the need of like an Ag Community Center in this county for meeting spaces, for 4A stuff for kids, I mean, for educational purposes. I mean, there's a big need for this. And I'm on the vice chair for the solar and water for Davie County. And, I mean, it's hard for us to hold meetings and stuff because of time regulations at certain facilities that we do use, or this meeting capacity at places. And I know there was some land that was talked about in the past, Henry has told us, that would be available for Ag purposes, for an Ag Community Center. And we was just meeting about this at times and was wanting to let y'all know that it's a concern, and we would probably be coming up before long with more information and details of what we would be requesting. And thank y'all for y'all's time and dedication to the county and everything that y'all do.
Mr. Chair, that's the only two individuals who signed up tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to our presentations. The first one will be the update on the solar ordinance. I'll call Mr. Meadwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Dr. Grisby has indicated, you know, the last time we were before you, we were in December when the board heard a portion of the text amendment, I'm sorry, I'm going to try to get this pulled up real quick, and, you know, the request for the extension of the moratorium. Just to bring the board up to speed where we're at, we've, you know, we've continually looked at this document to modify and continue to strengthen. But, you know, really still based on the planning board's recommendation that we've seen, you know, that board did not see for any need for any further solar development in the county. Right? And honestly, to this day, we have not had any other application or any inquiry to place another solar facility in the county. No one's really inquired as to when the moratorium is ended, you know, with an application ready to go once it does end, or if, you know, the ordinance is adopted. But, you know, right now, we have eight sites totaling over 600 acres, which, you know, 75% have had some type of ownership turnover, right? And these are ownership changes that aren't required to let the county know that this is happening. So applicant A that you may be dealing with at a public hearing presenting their application, you may not be that owner of that facility six months, 12 months, two years from now. And that was really a concern of the planning board, that we don't know who we're dealing with when it comes to some of the issues that have arisen, that are a potential risk that you may have. You know, one being, you know, the decommissioning, you know, who's going to be your dancing partner at the end of the night, right? That kind of issue there, so. So, we've, the board really looked at, we've, or the planning board looked that they had reached their capacity for solar development in Davie County. I think that was the underlying concern there from the board. You know, one of the things that the board looked at was the process in which we review these type applications. You know, we kind of went back and forth with this, whether this be a special use permit or remain as a legislative type decision. I think that this board, and it still needed to be that legislative decision, that you guys needed to be the ones to make that final decision on that request. But with that, we've seen that there were deficiencies in that review process. And as you see here, you know, we still require a community meeting, have the planning board meeting, but it was important that the planning board did not decide that vote that night, that it was going to be mandatory that we do a second meeting to process those comments, process this application, because, as you well know, these are very complicated. And that pressure to have to make a decision that night was unbearable. In some instances, this, because it was just impossible to do, process all this information that was being presented to, not only in the application, but also what the public comment is saying to you as board members. But, so we've added that, but the biggest thing is to, that they conduct this second community meeting based on this comment that is brought up at the public meeting. And only then is when the request can be sent to the Board of Commissioners for a public hearing. And likewise, for you, you'd have that ability to, you know, have that second meeting just because of the complexity of the issues that you have. You know, some of the site standards, you know, we really went back and forth on this. Right now, we're still at a minimum site of 25 acres and a maximum site of 100 acres. You know, one of the things was setbacks. That was a concern that just continually came up. We've increased those landscaping buffering. We've addressed those issues. You know, one is, you know, whether or not the buffers being maintained requirement will be that they have to certify that annually to us that those buffers can be maintained. If you recall, some of the projects we have, you know, they're off the road, right? You know, it was difficult for staff to ride out and check, you know, hey, is it time to go look at this project? And, you know, a 200-acre site or 150, for us to drive around to see if the buffers were being maintained. So this will be a requirement that the applicant has to meet. Also, a Phase 1 environmental and an environmental impact analysis will be required just to see what impact is there. Erosion control permit. I think that you've seen this in a couple of applications, but these, this visual simulations, I think that's very key and important to you as you're looking at this and being able to see what kind of impact this will have on those surrounding property owners. That would be required as well as determined by the county. And, you know, a basic issue, emergency access plan, right? We have our emergency services folks looking at these to make sure, because, you know, with a lot of these type projects, now you have internal battery storage within the facility. So having, giving those folks to take a look at and see, make sure it complies with their standards. Also, approval from the North Carolina Utilities Commission, and that certificate of public convenience and necessity shall be provided with the application for rezoning. We're seeing a lot of times, these projects have come through, and they haven't even been to the Utilities Commission yet. Or they've got this certificate of kind of need for projects. So, you know, we're approving projects or rezoning property for, to allow them to apply not only for permits, but they haven't even went to the state yet. So, you know, if they don't get approved there, here we're, we, the county has rezoned property, and it's really going to require that property owner to come back before you to change the zoning back, back to typically that residential agricultural zoning classification. The owner has to provide compliance every two years, you know, and that the, it's going to be their responsibility to inform the county of any changes to that lease agreement within 45 days. So, like I said, these things are very fluid, and they change very quickly. You know, one of the things, and Mark, you ask this question almost every, you know, what are we going to do about decommissioning, right? I think this is probably one of the issues that we probably discuss the most. You know, we don't know what the right formula is, what the right amount is. And I think you see that because you don't have a lot of projects that have had to go through this process, we don't know, right? But what we've looked at, and this was recommended, that it's based on the $100,000 per megawatt of power, right? So if it's a 50-watt megawatt facility, right, $100,000 times 50, that's going to be your decommission. But the other big change is we don't give you any kind of credit for any salvageable material, right? In the previous ordinance is whatever you could get, you take away from that dollar amount, and then you're left with X dollars to apply to the rest of the site. Sometimes that doesn't cut the total cost for bringing the property back to the condition that it needs to be in once they do leave, so. We added to the comprehensive plant, a section there that was another deficiency that we've seen, that the comp plan did not mention utility scale solar. So we've added that in. That will be on page 42. But, you know, there are still concerns that the board has, you know. And as Ms. Grisby had mentioned, the size and the scope, I mean, I think that's just going to be a question that you as board members will have to, you know, really decide on that. But, you know, it's still a lot of unknowns just because we don't know. And this is our best attempt to address these concerns. We think we've done a decent job on that. But, you know, it's that unknown is still there. So what staff would ask is that the board call for a public hearing at its June 6th meeting. This will allow the board several months to deliberate and to change and/or approve the suggested ordinance language there. But our moratorium expires on August 3rd, 2022. So theoretically, you could call for the public hearing in June, discuss there, go to July. But August is really the day that we need to, I really wouldn't want to go to August, but, you know, it's a complicated subject, right? So, but if we need to go to August, we can go to August on that, that August 1st meeting, I think, is that date on that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. But staff would ask that a public hearing be called.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Meadwell?
I just have a quick question. Did you all have, in terms of the maximum size of the projects, did you all talk about?
We did, and, you know, you know, I guess the issue is, you know, if we say a minimum of 50 acres, 25 acres, 75 acres, whatever, the applicant can always subdivide the property. So instead of, you know, one request for 100 acres, or one request for 200 acres, it, you may get three requests for, you know, two, three, 75-acre tracks, right? So it's, but I think when we looked at, when you look at the coverage area, the setbacks, that seemed to fit better when you squeeze down these tracks. But there again, it's still a, it's a legislative decision by you guys, right? You know, if you don't like 100, if the ordinance is 100 acres or 200, if you don't like a project, you just don't like a project, right? And, you know, if that is something that bothers you, it's just too big, right? You know, that means, that's something you can deny a project, that it just doesn't fit, right?
Andrew, are you aware at this time, if any of the present solar farm locations have failed to meet the requirements that were given them?
That's a, I would say that's a loaded question.
Well, that's why I say, are you aware?
We know that, you know, some things have lapsed and they've changed. New owners have taken over, right? You know, and they file that guarantee kind of with us that they're, you know, we about need a paralegal to kind of run this stuff down. We're probably, from a staff level, we're probably not the most equipped to be able to find. And, you know, if you heard Ms. Grisby, she's done a lot of digging too. I mean, you have to dig through a lot of different state agencies and things like that to find where these folks are. And when they're changing ownership, changing leases, that makes it even more difficult.
Well, but if we can't monitor them and ensure that they're following the regulations, then the regulations are not effective.
Right, that's where the requirement is, that they have to show they are meeting the requirements, right? So that's going to be the catch right there, that they have to provide that to us. Instead of us chasing the rabbit, they're going to, you know, bring it to us.
And then personally, I just would like for the board to think about this one statement here. "We advocate for current and future residents to be protected from further visual encroachment while also protecting our raw farmland." There are other things, other than just solar farms, that can be proposed to be on farmland that can be considered a visual encroachment or non-protection of the farmland, in my opinion. So, because, you know, we've had neighbors before that said they would rather have a solar farm than a housing development. So that's going to be a personal preference there.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Meadwell?
Yes, I have one I wanted to ask, if you don't mind, like on a 25-acre tract or 100-acre tract, that's the size of the entire project with setbacks and everything.
That would be the raw acreage amount, right? So by the time you take your buffers out, your, you know, your coverage areas, landscape, stuff like that, you start to shrink the actual panel area down. It may be a total 100-acre tract, but by the time you squeeze in, your panel area is significantly smaller.
With 250-foot setback on a 25-acre project, you're probably going to end up with maybe five acres, 10 acres of solar panels.
That's correct, correct.
Anybody else? I would just like to say that, Mr. Meadwell, yourself and the board, we appreciate the number of hours that you've spent dealing with this and helping us try to, try to be able to see things in a better light. And it's kind of hard because we have no data here. It's unlike anything else we've ever dealt with, so, so thank you. So I think we're looking to make a recommendation to put this on for a public notice. I would say either, I would like to see it in the July meeting, preferably not the June meeting. Anybody have any discussion regarding that, or any concerns? Okay, so can I make that to you, Andrew, that we'll put this on for July?
And if it pleases the board, what we'll do, we'll go ahead and have the draft copy of the text amendment in your June agenda package right there, just that way you guys can go ahead and start digesting this and be ready to discuss in July. But that August is our deadline that we need to meet.
All right, good, thank you. Okay. We'll move on to our next presentation, the accessibility for the parks presentation. Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County staff. Today, we want to bring to you the presentation for the 2022 Accessibility for Parks. This is a great park planning opportunity that we're bringing before you tonight. As we do with any presentation, whether it's to you or our general public, we visit our vision and mission statement that we are a vibrant and innovative and viable department committed to providing excellent recreational service delivery, enriching active movement, and achieving a high quality of life for our residents, which leads into our mission statement. Today, we bring for you a rare opportunity in the form of a grant through the state budget this year called the Accessibility for Parks Program. Quickly, it provides $10 million for parks and recreation grants to benefit children and veterans with disabilities in North Carolina. Naturally, local governments can apply. This grant is administered just like the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund through the Division of Parks and Recreation, and it is adjudicated through the Partif Authority. Matching grants can be used to build accessible facilities or adapt existing facilities that meet the unique needs of our children and veterans with physical and developmental disabilities. The difference here between Partif and the AFP program is where if Partif is a dollar-for-dollar match, this one is a one-to-five match, so very rare and an excellent opportunity. So likewise, I would imagine the competition will even be tough. So the important piece for this program is to look at unique facilities. And what we have for you tonight is a project that will do just that. So just to give you a timeline, as we're not in crunch mode here, as a lot of, some of, some of these grants that have come out through state and federal government in the past couple of years have been, you know, turnkey, within six months, get it done and out the door. This one has the same parameters as Partif, three years to plan, design, construct your grant proposal if awarded. So the announcement came out in March. We're waiting on the application instructions, which we had a couple of directors' meetings without the state, throughout the state, that gives us an idea of what those instructions look like. September 15th is when our application would need to be at the ready for our Recreation Resource Consultant, for the Central West Consultant for us, and then our full application ready by November the 1st. And then spring of 2023 is when the selections will be made. So now, to get you a little bit excited about this program, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Whitney Fitzsimmons, our Marketing Events Coordinator, to tell you about our park project.
Thank you. So our proposal is to build a unique, one-of-a-kind, canoply treescape. This is an inclusive, interactive, outdoor treehouse. We have heard that a picture is worth a thousand words, but we also believe that in order to reach its full potential, that imagination should be at the forefront of this design. This treescape will be designed as an opportunity for education, exploration, and outdoor adventure, and will be planted within the northern boundary of the park that you'll see in the site map and the master plan later on. This treehouse will be a piece and a place for children and adults of all ages and abilities to play together. Imagine a rock wall scaling from the bottom up with adaptive harness options, or a bike that rappels vertically, so it not only offers pedal extensions for children, but individuals with dwarfism, hand pedals for individuals with limited mobility in their legs. Part of this unique design also allows for sensory relief and education. So picture railing enclosures that feature timber-treated, organically shaped branches from native North Carolina trees to help with tree identification, and nooks that mimic stumps or native niche habitats that one could perch just for reading. A major component of this project also includes a boardwalk that connects to our existing boardwalk observatory. Boardwalk Observatory. Features like thin leads that are incorporated into the custom design allows for individuals with limited or no vision to independently participate. Nature interactives that are designed to move with one simple motion to help with fine motor skills and repetitive cognitive development for individuals with cranial limitations that happen from traumatic injury, or nervous system and muscular coordination that are impacted by muscular dystrophy or cerebral palsy and others. The Accessibility for Parks Program is designed to specifically fund projects that challenge organizations like ours to rethink design, recreate fun, and interactive spaces so that everyone has the opportunity and the option to play together. We advocate for individuals who make up our unique population to know that they are heard and that their experience is important to us. We've been in contact with the Meben Foundation, and they are committed to at least $25,000 if awarded the AFP program grant to help with the education and literacy components of this project. So why is this important? Why is this a fit for the AFP program? Well, our team believes that this Canoplae treescape is the perfect right fit for the AFP grant based on their mission and our vision to create an environment that encourages all people, regardless of their barriers, to come and play together. The opening of the Davie County Community Park has expanded and shown light on the opportunity for accessible, safe, and unique components with the potential for expansion. And now I'll turn it back over to Paul to talk about what's been done thus far.
Thank you, Whitney. So the actions taken so far, as you know, during our design and our construction process for Phase One of the park, we had a great partner in McAdams. We reached out to them as a, as a preface for this grant, and they were willing enough to go in and make changes to our site plan, which was part of our original Partif application, as well as our park master plan for updates. So both of these plans are required in the application for the AFP grant, and just one of many components. So the difference between the two, the site plan identifies and illustrates the proposed location of the grant proposal, so at a glance, the authority can look and see where it's at, what's been built, what's future-built, what's the project. And then, of course, the master plan is the color rendering that shows the full build-out of the plan that's been approved by the Commissioners. So here is the site plan. What's, what's really important for you to know is whether it's through the site plan or the master plan, no, no component of either plan is in conflict with what has been approved already. The space where we're proposing this project is on our northern boundary, so from this mapping, it kind of looks like it's to the west, but it's actually to the north. You see our Boardwalk Observatory. Everything in green here is our Canoplae structure, as well as the Boardwalk connection that'll lead down to our existing Boardwalk Observatory. So again, what's important here is noting the fact that you can see it as a glance, what's, what's future, what's in the future to be built, what we're currently proposing, and it has no impact on the overall master plan. Here is the current full build-out master plan that was approved by Commissioners back in 2017, and what we've done is gone through some small changes and updates, actually like this plan a lot better, to include, you see Y and Z, the Canoplae treescape and the Boardwalk Observatory just noted the location of where those facilities will be, and to show that, again, no impacts are made to any other components of the original approved master plan. What this also does, while the AFP is not meant to fix ADA problems, as we should be ADA compliant, we noticed that during construction, at the end of the construction, we noticed that we had, we do have a grade, a small grading issue that leads down to our current observatory. We have actually witnessed this in person with two individuals that couldn't make the grade, and we had to help them. So this will solve that problem, adding the extension from the Canoplae structure to our existing system. But we won't reiterate that as part of the plan within, within the application. So tonight, what we're asking for is one motion to cover four things. One is the approval for our department to apply for the 2022 Accessibility for Parks grant, approval for our department to request up to, but no more than $100,000 in local matching general funds as a result of the American Rescue Plan within the application, the adoption of the revised site plan, and the adoption of the revised master plan, the full build-out plan. I'm going to go back up to the bullet number two. So thinking of cost, when we're talking about a custom design and a universal design, knowing the landscape of where it's going to be built on a hillside, it's going to be ever bit of, ever bit of a $600,000 project. When you take in design, the consultant, design, the architect, civil engineering, site engineering, civil engineering, landscape architect, we want to make sure that we're not disturbing the environment, with the exception of eliminating the underbrush. We don't want any trees to be cut down. Whatever we encounter in the structure build, we'll have to build around it so the tree can actually continue to grow. And one of those trees we want to create is our literacy tree specifically for the Meben Foundation. We'll go through the same process through Partif. There will be public input meetings so that they can give us their thoughts, their concept designs, through the consultant, that can also give them thoughts and ideas of what could potentially go in there universally, as well as something unique. Again, it's a one-of-a-kind component added to our park that no other park has in the state of North Carolina. Sure, there are treehouses, but there's not a Canoplae treescape much like that we're building. So when we think about accessibility for parks program, this will fit that mold in its entirety. So, and last bit, the Recreation Park Advisory Board has looked at both the site and master plan, as well as our proposal, and approved the said actions listed above Ten O on April the 11th. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, and we'll be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Moore?
Oh, will the people be able to access this Canoplae location from this existing smaller parking lot, or will they have to traipse all the way across the campus?
Absolutely. So if you look in your site plan, the joint use agreement where our dog parks are, you can actually easily access that from the parking lot, take our greenway all the way around, and be able to connect to the front of the Canoplae system.
Okay, because the special groups that Whitney is mentioning, a lot of them, it's going to be a trek to go all the way across there, so that's great. And my other question would be, it sounds like it's going to need to be monitored by an employee.
No.
You think it'll be totally self-sufficient?
It will.
Even with the...
It will not require, require that, especially with the universal design piece. It's meant to not have to have that, but there could be instructions as far as harnessing of how to completely harness. Same thing with the Elevate Fitness Course that you see out there, there are specific directions on, on how each piece is supposed to be used. We will incorporate those same, we call them component wayfinding signage.
I will tell you that the harnessing without supervision is concerning to me.
Yep. Really noted, and that's something, again, during public input and during the design, that's something that we can look at.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I love the idea, but that just is a little bit concerning.
Yep, understood.
Moore, I have a question about the cost. Just given the intricacy of this and the kind of the one-off that it is, you pretty confident about 600 grand?
Definitely confident, considering the custom design and especially looking at universal design, this drives cost up immediately. I wouldn't expect to see any, I would be very shocked to see any project proposal that's less than $250,000. And we go up to that amount because of the size and how it's going to be designed. Now, what will be made clear during our RFQ/RFP process and the consultant is, there is, we will have to include the Plan B of Value Engineering, just in case anything goes overbid. We cannot go over that, that amount. And anything extra that, of course, the Meben Foundation, spoke with Larry Colburn, he's given me the go-ahead to mention this in Commissioners' meeting, that they are committed to at least 25,000 if we are awarded the grant. So that was a huge, significant piece for us, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, so we would seek a motion to, a motion to approve, Mr. Moore, to approve, to proceed with the grant process, I believe that's where we are. Anyone, anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I got a motion on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, next we'll move to consent agenda. Do we have any discussion, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the table, for discussion. All in favor? Five oh, thank you. All right, next we'll move to old business. Do we have any old business to come before us this evening? All right, seeing none, move to new business. Item A would be the salary study, I'll call them Ms. Robert West.
Tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of our, our salary study that we started back last fall. We engaged with David Hill through the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council for our initial analysis. So we took each of our full-time positions and compared their salaries with basically the counties around us, as well as for some positions, the cities of Salisbury and Statesville. For a few positions, just to get further comparables, we compared them also to Surrey, Stokes, and Wilkes in some cases. What we decided to do is the same approach that we took last time we did the salary study. We said that where a person is on their current grade range is where they should be on any new grade range. So if you are at 80% of the midpoint at your current grade, then we assume that you should be at 80% of the midpoint of any new grade. So that's the most equitable way we could find to do it. It prevents compression in salaries and keeps people equitably spaced. So this affected most of our employees. There were a handful of employees that it did not affect, so those folks increased by at least one grade. So what we're looking at right now, as salaries change almost daily, it feels like, I'm sure it's not every day, but most days, at the point that we are looking at it is $1.167 million in salary increases, and when you included related benefits, that is up to $1.4 million. So we're happy to say that, right now, this would bring our minimum hourly rate for our full-time employees to $15 an hour, except for a couple of people who are in work-against positions. Those folks would be hired at, for a job that they weren't necessarily had the minimum qualifications for, so they would have to work a period of time before they would meet that minimum. So there's just a couple of those folks. What we're proposing to do is to spread this increase over two installments that are roughly 50/50. The first of which would be, hopefully sometime this month, if we can review all our study findings with each director, and the second would be in the beginning of January of 2023. So after the beginning of January, we'll have completed this whole salary study and gotten all our pay increases included. The reason why it's not exactly 50/50, we have some folks that are at the minimum of a grade, and when they go up to the, the new grade, we want them to be at least at the minimum. So those folks will get their whole increase in the first installment. That's the reason why it's not exactly 50/50. So the next steps would be meeting with each department director and reviewing the, the study findings. So we would go through each position that's within that department, where they are currently, where we propose them to be, and what those increases look like, and then we have, will distribute individual letters to each full-time employee. So this is for full-time employees. This will also affect some part-time employees if there is a full-time position that's equivalent to that, so those folks will be affected too. So that's basically the overview. Let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Robin?
I don't have a question, but... We met on this, and...
Yes.
The, the, the main concern I had was how do we pay for this?
Right.
And I'm not going to ask you necessarily to go into it tonight, but I was assured and confident that we can do this within our current tax base, that we can assimilate it into our tax rate, so we're not looking at tax increases, and I think that's, I appreciate you, all you've done with this, and the fact that we're able to do this without, without increasing taxes, I think is outstanding.
We all know the pressure's on. I mean, if you look at the headlines, I have a Google alert about counties. Every day, something's coming across. There are so many other folks that are out here doing salary studies, not just doing salary studies, but looking at cost of livings, you know, we're all feeling the pressure at the gas pump and the grocery store. We're all seeing that, so, you know, the pressure's on. That's why, you know, I think it's very important that we, you know, take this seriously under consideration so we can get these folks paid at a level where they're supposed to be.
Agreed. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a couple. When you talk about the, the salary grade, I assume that's the state grade that we've adopted?
Well, we have adopted a grade range, and I think it ranges from like the high 50s to 80-something. So each grade level has a 5% difference in between them. So when you're moving a person from one grade to the next grade, that would be a 5% difference.
But that's the state grade that we've adopted?
It's not a state grade, it's just Davie County's grade, because if you look at a grade 68, that might be a grade 17 somewhere else. It just depends on the entity. So that's just the grade that...
We have our own pay plan that actually the board has adopted, past boards have adopted, that constitutes our salary grades and assignments to salary grades for all of our positions. The work that was done, that's being brought to you now as a result of the analysis of that existing pay plan, where we found we weren't competitive with our positions, and so the recommendations, we haven't changed the pay plan, the structure of the grade or the salary ranges, we've simply changed the positions and their locations in the pay plan based on the...
Right, so what the consultant was looking at, not that you were a grade 68, but the grade, the pay range associated with that grade.
Okay, and I guess that's really my question. Did we refresh the grade before we launched?
No. So the ranges tied to those grades are the same ranges. So if we decide if someone wasn't in the correct grade, pay range, then we move them a grade.
When we, if you, if the board awards across-the-board increase, for example, to, let's say, a 1% next year to all county employees that are in the pay plan, then we refresh the pay plan. The grades will be refreshed at that time when increases are awarded on a cross-the-board basis. That's when we adjust those grades.
Right.
So we believe, and I absolutely support this, but once we get to this level that we think that we can keep up with COLA adjustments and keep everybody in competitive, which we must do...
Right, exactly. Because, you know, if you look, like I said, if you, again, if you look at what other folks are doing, lots of people are doing the same, you know, not only a salary study, but, you know, a higher range of COLA than what we had seen in the past. But again, you know, like Mr. Ruffin said, at the point, we change the grade scale when we do across-the-board increases. But again, you know, like Mr. Ruffin said, at the point, we change the grade scale when we do across-the-board increases.
Any questions for Robin?
You're fairly confident that most employees are going to benefit from this?
Yes.
Well, I think we can all agree, as long as we can keep this within our budget. Like Mark said, we're going to invest in our assets, which are people. And they help us service our community, and that's what we have. So I think we can all support that. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Rob.
If anyone, if you want to take action here.
If.
We need to take action on that. I apologize. All right, so everybody in agreeance, I'll seek a motion on the table to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Five oh, all right. Thank you, Rob. All right, next we'll pull that proclamation up, the proclamation for National Law Enforcement Week, and I'll go to Mr. Ruffin.
All right, this is, I'll read this, the proclamation for National Law Enforcement Week and National Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it fell is National Law Enforcement Week to pay special attention to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Davie County Sheriff's Department. And whereas since its first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas National Law Enforcement Week will be observed this year from May the 11th to May the 17th. And whereas law enforcement officers are charged with pursuing justice for all individuals and performing their duties with fidelity to the constitutional and civil rights of the individuals that law enforcement officers serve. And whereas the resolve of law enforcement officers in their service of their community is unyielding despite inherent dangers in the performance of their duties. And whereas the vigilance, compassion, and decency of law enforcement officers are the best defense of society against individuals who do seek to harm. And whereas Peace Officers Memorial Day 2021, on May the 15th, 2022, honors 609 law enforcement officers who died in line of duty during 2021, with 24 of those being in North Carolina. And whereas during the first four months of 2022, 92 law enforcement officers across the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice with four of those officers in North Carolina. And whereas all citizens in Davie County should remember and recognize the men and women who served and protect them. And keep in mind that there are law enforcement officers working in the county every hour of every day to ensure that they remain safe. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Davie County, formally designates May the 11th, 2022 through May the 17th, 2022, as National Law Enforcement Week in Davie County, and May the 15th, 2022, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Davie County, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Adopted this the second day of May, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffin. JD, we certainly appreciate what you and your staff do to keep us safe here in our community.
I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you for adopting the resolution, the proclamation. I think there are four names on a monument out in front of this building that have died in the line of duty in this county. Thankfully, it's been a long time, and I hope it never happens again. But all you have to do is watch the news to see that law enforcement has been under tremendous pressure everywhere. I have two officers out right now recovering from injuries sustained from people resisting. So we appreciate your support now more than you can ever imagine. So thank you very much.
Thank you, JD. Okay, so once, since we pulled it, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
They're moved.
All right.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Five oh, thank you. All right, next we'll move to the county manager's report, Mr. Ruffin.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two announcements. Tabitha Parish, our elections director, has announced her retirement on July 29th. This is a huge loss to our county. I have worked in counties where elections have not gone well, and I'm grateful for Tabitha and her team that have enabled our county not to experience those kinds of problems. So certainly just want to say to her, she's a very humble, you know, doesn't, didn't want to come, hasn't won a lot of attention. She just works hard and does a good job. And I wanted to let the board know, this is a little different appointment process. I just thought I'd take a second. The County Board of Elections submits the name of the person that it recommends to the state, to the executive director, the State Board of Elections, and they have, they have to issue the letter of appointment. And the executive director has to make a decision within 10 days of receiving the letter from the Board of Elections. So that's the process. So it will be our local Board of Elections. It will be interviewing and make a decision about what name should go forward to the executive director of the State Board of Elections. I'm pretty sure they've got a process mapped out or ready to get underway so that there'll be a very fluid transition. But my thanks to Tabitha for all the work she is doing now in this particular election that's coming up and all the work she's done. It's just, that's a huge loss for us, and we will miss her. Secondly, another fairly significant loss, Amy Flight, who is senior planner with Andrew. I think all of you know her and the work she does. She has been appointed, or will be appointed, Assistant Town Manager for the town of Clemens. And so she'll be leaving in the next little time. And Amy just received, or will shortly receive, her MPA from Appalachian State University. So this has been a career path that she's decided to follow and very much excited about this job. She's been with us for 15 years. I don't know if Andrew's still here, but I think that's what she told me today. 15 years that she's been with us, and she is a workhorse. I mean that. I know how much she does when these public hearings that you hold, all the work and the detailed staff work that you get. You know, Amy's doing a lot of that, so we're going to work very diligently to find a replacement. But I don't think we'll be replacing someone like Amy. It'll take a while for someone to grow into that job and become what Amy has meant to us. I just wanted to mention that to you. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
We certainly wish them the best. We salute them for their service to our community and our citizens. Thank you. Next we'll move to commissioners' comments, ladies first, Ms. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first I just want to say how much we will miss Amy and Tabitha and the work that they've done. And I am especially going to miss Tabitha because we certainly have been privileged to have a magnificent leader in our Board of Elections, and we have no doubt that our election process is taken care of and can be trusted and is smooth. And she also helps us as candidates when it's our time to run. She is a wealth of information, very honest, healed with integrity, and she will definitely be missed. Craig, I want to thank you for coming and starting the conversation about the ag building. I think that's an awesome idea, and I hope that we will be able to have an extensive conversation about that because I'm excited. We do have some younger people in the county who are beginning to farm and make this their career in teaching their children to farm. And we, I certainly would like to encourage that and take care of all of you all and do all that we can to make your life easier and bring more attention to our agriculture here in the county. So that's wonderful. May is an extremely busy month. I always say May's as busy as December because in May, we recognize prayer. We recognize mothers, teachers, principals, nurses, correction officers, law enforcement officers, foster care, Memorial Day, and we have graduations, weddings, and Election Day. So the next few days for all of us are going to be really crazy, but I hope that we'll take the time to say thank you to all of the special people that are to be recognized this month. And I just want to give a little extra shout-out. We are always, of course, so extra grateful and so blessed to have the quality of emergency service and first responders that we have in this county. But the past few weeks have been a little extra hard, and I just want you all to know that we are thanking you as you process what you've had to go through, and we're very thankful that you're there. I remember years ago when I dispatched at the 911 center on a weekend, we may not get a call. And overnight, we may not get a call. That is no longer the case. Our emergency service workers are constantly working and constantly busy because as we grow, so do our emergencies. But there's been some extra hard ones, and I just want you all to know that we're praying a little harder for you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Finney. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be short. Thank everyone for coming tonight. We always appreciate your input. You're what makes this county the greatest county in North Carolina to raise a family. Greg, I will say this to you, I appreciate you coming. I won't play too much off of what Benita said. But several years ago, you know, Mr. Walker and those guys brought us a plan for an ag center. My friend Richard Carter out in the audience had some kind of ideas that go along more of a ag fairground kind of idea that would, that I think would complement what you're talking about here. So Richard's sitting right there on the back row, you can, you can talk to him. But I too appreciate you bringing and getting the conversation started. I think it's something we need to really address and move forward with, okay? So keep us informed, keep us in a loop. If there's anything we can do to help, just let us know, okay? And, Mr. Chairman, that's it for me. And again, I mean, Tabitha, I mean, my goodness, I've, she's, I've been having to ask her questions for 20 years and before her, Miss Shu. She does, she does a tremendous job, and I think she has put a great team in place to kind of follow in behind her too. So that'll be, that's a testament to her leadership too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Foindexter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like also to say to the ag people that we have, over the years, discussed this many times and continue to, to this day even. So don't get discouraged, things just take a little time sometimes. But I did want to say that Tuesday, I went up to Lone Hickory to their wonderful facility that they have up there. And to see the schoolchildren there, learning something about farming and the excitement that they showed and the questions that they asked was really something to behold. And I would recommend to everybody, they need to go up and check that out in the future. Also, I want to say, don't you dare forget Mother's Day. It's coming up next Sunday, so just make sure that you let them know how much they are appreciated. And congratulations to Amy on her job, and congratulations to Tabitha on her retirement. And thank all of you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Renninger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everyone being here this evening on the agricultural piece. Mr. Walker's passion has been communicated clearly for several years. And I appreciate the new committee or the, such as you are, just getting started, kind of taking the reins on that. And I agree, it deserves a fair discussion to see what we could do. So thank you for that. I want to, on the salary and wage study, that was a ton of work. I want to commend the staff for Robin and Cindy for all your work because that's a bunch, that's a ton of work. And as we know, our employees are our greatest asset in this county, and I truly believe that. And we got to do what we can to keep them, keep it competitive so we can retain them. And that's just critical, so thank you for your work on that. On the solar farm issue, again, that has been a monumental task. I appreciate all the work that's been done with that. And that continues to be an issue that I look forward to resolving here, hopefully in August. And want to wish Amy and Tabitha, I guess Tabitha in retirement, Amy in her new path. I did not realize she had been with us 15 years, but I guess I'm getting old, so. But anyway, with that, I appreciate it, and thank you for being here.
I guess time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, May is a busy month. It's my busiest month of the year. Pray for rain right now, we need it bad. As far as the, as far as the ag building goes, I grew up in an agricultural family, so it's a very important piece of my family. It's also a very important piece of this community. And I also believe it's very important to give back to our children and to teach them the essentials of what it is to raise things yourself, to be self-sufficient. I think it's a very important piece. So you have this board's support. Continue to keep us informed, and we will work with you on that. Appreciate that. As far as the solar farms go, I do confirm what Commissioner Renninger said. This is a, this is a piece that we really just don't have a lot of data on, but it's a very important piece. And we do want to preserve our community. We want to preserve our values, and we want to make sure that we make the right decisions. Mother's Day is coming up. We all agree that whenever your dad wanted to spank you, you ran and hid behind a tree and called you mom. At least I did. So please remember that, you know, moms are special. And, you know, please, please remember that and salute them on Mother's Day. And also, May the 17th, please get out and vote. Speak your, speak your voice in democracy. There's early voting set up now, but please go vote. Please ask other people, have you voted? That is how democracy works, and that is how we voice our opinion in the community. So please don't forget that. And that's all I've got. With that, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.